Good evening, thanks for being here. We are going to call to order the Thursday, October 11th, 2018, meeting of the Northampton Planning Board. We always start our meetings opening up public comment for any item that is not on our agenda, so if there is public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
I'm Carson Poe from 32 Masonic Street here in Northampton, and I'd just like to wish our Acting Planning Board Chair, Teresa Perron-Poe, happy birthday tomorrow.
Oh. Thank you.
I know, right?
And now he leaves. This is part of my 12-day celebration. So we have two hearings on the agenda for 7:00 PM. The first is a site plan for Verizon Wireless to add panels to the existing pole at 190 Spring Grove Avenue, Florence MAP ID 17A-17. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
Hi, good evening. My name's Eric Campbell. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, and we're seeking approval for an installation of equipment on the pole that you suggested. It's in front of 395 Elm Street. The panel antenna is going to be located on the top of a proposed 40-foot Class II pole with associated equipment on the pole. No ground equipment will be required.
Can I pause you for just a moment?
He's talking about the wrong one.
So we do have both hearings listed for 7:00 PM.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So if you'd like, if you could start with the 190 Spring Grove Ave., that would be in line with folks who are keeping track on our agenda here.
There you go. We are proposing to put equipment on 190 Spring Grove Ave. in front of that address. The antenna is going to be at the top of the existing 45-class guide pole with associated equipment on the pole. No ground equipment will be required. Pull this screen from the front of the house. That's in front of it's a guide pole. The regular line is on the other side, and so we're looking to install the equipment on that. I do have some plans here. I'm going to ask that A&amp;E come up and go briefly over the installation. I have someone here from the hotel.
Sure. As Eric said here, this is a small cell site at the Spring Grove Avenue location. What this is here.
The cameras can't see that?
There's a camera right here.
They got it? Okay.
Yeah, I think he's on, he is on camera.
Can you see it? Maybe on the wide street.
And these plans are also included in the application, correct? That is available online and in the planning office as well?
You might want to orient it a little bit that way so the public can see the.
You guys have plans in front of you, right?
Yes, we do. We have hard copies.
So anyway, the existing pole here is a 35-foot, what they call a Class III pole, 45-foot rather. About six or seven feet buried in the ground, so you end up with a top of pole height around 38, 39 feet. It's what's called a guide pole, so it's a pole sort of on the opposite side of the street of the normal utility run. Verizon's proposing to locate small cell equipment, which consists of basically four items. The first is an antenna, which is kind of a cylindrical antenna. It's about 14, 15 inches in diameter, about two feet tall. That's located at the top of the pole. At the bottom, there's a meter and disconnect that provides the power for the facility. Midway up the pole is equipment consisting of RF radio, which generates the signal that goes to the antenna. And of course, there's a telco requirement, a fiber backhaul that allows the network to talk. So these items here are mounted on the existing pole. The rest of the plan set here is basically just sort of some details on how those attachments occur. Again, we talked a little bit about the antenna and how it's mounted to the top of the pole. Really here, this equipment, this small cell equipment is called small because the equipment's actually small and it covers a small area. This type of equipment is no larger than typical pole-mounted transformers that we, that are ubiquitous, that we see everywhere on these types of structures.
I'm going to now ask that Verizon's RF engineer come up and just explain the need for it. Thank you.
My name's Jay Lattori. I'm a radio frequency engineer with Verizon Wireless. My home address is 122 Forest Hills Road in Springfield. I'm here today to talk to you about the facility on the Spring Grove Avenue that Verizon calls Northampton Small Cell One. My colleague is passing out a engineering necessity case document for you that I prepared and was also included as part of the application and in addition was amended following some comments that we got back from the board. There's a lot of information in here, and I can walk you through any that you'd like me to, but I'm just going to touch on a couple of points. As Eric mentioned, Verizon has deployed small cell technology in many municipalities across Western Massachusetts and across New England. Small cells are, as they're mentioned, small facilities typically utilizing existing right-of-way infrastructure like this utility pole. They typically provide Verizon Wireless's wireless service in a range of anywhere between 500 to 1,000 feet, typically in a radius in a 360-degree pattern. The facilities are designed to enhance wireless service and augment capacity in areas where service may be less than robust or where there is a noticeable demand for capacity. In this particular circumstance, there are two driving forces here. I'm going to ask that if everyone could please go to the slide. I apologize, this document doesn't have page numbers on it, but if you go towards the back, you'll see a page that looks like this. It says, "Coverage at 2100 megahertz," and it has two maps on it. Does everyone find that okay? Okay, great. So the map on the left-hand side shows Verizon's 2100 megahertz coverage. That's the frequency that Verizon broadcasts what it calls its X LTE service. This is Verizon's high-speed 4G LTE service that it provides to its customers. On the left-hand side, you'll see kind of a larger zoomed-out view of this service in the area. We have two facilities in this particular area of the city, one of which is a large tower to the north, and then there is another facility down in Florence on a smokestack. And then you'll see, towards the middle, you'll see a circle that's not colored in, and that represents the proposed facility. There's different coverage levels that are shown here. The green signal strength represents reliable indoor coverage. The yellow is meant to represent reliable in-car coverage, and the gray, which is a little bit faded, is meant to show reliable outdoor coverage. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that if one of these three areas is not covered, that there's no coverage. Verizon does have different frequencies that provide different levels of service. However, this facility is designed to show this one frequency, so I just wanted to highlight this to you. And you'll see on the right-hand side, the proposed 2100 megahertz coverage map, you'll see with the proposed facility modeled and activated, you'll see a large area of green, yellow, and some gray that fills in that small area. And if you turn that page, you'll see a third coverage map that is zoomed in. This is some feedback that we got from the board requesting that we get a better view of what this facility is designed to cover. So you'll see it's a fairly small area. It can cover, you know, there's roughly about eight to 10 streets that will benefit from it. In particular, the, my decision to locate a facility here was based on a desire to enhance service at JFK Middle School and in and around it. In particular, earlier this year, I had, after I had already designed these sites, met with Mr. Pagan from the IT Department and the School Department to walk some of these buildings, including the other facility that we'll talk about tonight, to kind of gauge what service was like inside. And, you know, we feel very confident that the proposed facility will augment service and that there's a lot of great things, in particular, you know, helps with public safety, but also can help with innovation in education as more schools embrace technology in their education platform. That's basically the highlights of the RF justification, and I'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
I have one quick question, just for folks who are listening who may have looked at your application before coming tonight. Are these two maps the main thing that's different about what was previously submitted? Or is there anything else in here that's different from what folks would have seen in the existing application?
So this map right here, the zoomed-in map, is really the only thing that's different about this particular application. On the second application, which I can call out as well for you either now or later, there's two differences that I'll mention.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, actually.
Oh, yes.
On the, this page, the one that has the double maps, you said there's a tower or facility to the north and one to the south. Is the one to the north on the map?
You know what? I do apologize for that miss. I noticed that it's, it is on the map and it's covered by my.
By the legend.
I'm very sorry for that.
That's okay. I just wanted to.
Forgive me for the lack of total knowledge, but I think it's, is it called Horse Mountain? Am I getting that right further?
I'm not sure.
Further north, where the elevation really rises towards Williamsburg. There's, I believe there's at least two towers up there, and that's where that facility is.
Okay, so it's covered somewhere underneath that legend approximately.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry for that omission.
That's fine.
Anything else I can answer right now?
Just to add to Jay's point, I know that when I have young kids and I go to the school, there's usually a drop-off. There's people waiting, there are people at events or sport events, and there's a lot of data being used. So I know that, you know, there is a need for areas where there's a lot of populated, a lot of people and a lot of functions going on. Some of the other benefits that this provides is that when you have a site that's targeting certain areas, it allows the other sites to work better and therefore makes the network more efficient. I know that you probably heard, there's a lot of 911 calls that come from mobile phones. That's a drastic increase from previous years. Data use has gone up quite a bit as well. Just over half, 50% of housing households only have a mobile device connection, but for millennials, that number increases to over two-thirds who live in a mobile household only. So a lot of people are cutting their landlines and using mobile only. Video has gone up to around 70% for traffic data. Teen usage for cellular data for smartphones. Video has grown 127% in 15 months. Teens have increased smartphone TV video viewing by 85% in the last four years, and 76% is, was the percentage of 911 calls that originate from a cellphone. So there's a lot of benefits that this cell site provides. I know that some people will say, "Well, I don't have Verizon, so how does this benefit me?" But I think everyone benefits from people having service. People contact you, other people contact you, other people can call 911 for you, other people can report break-ins or accidents or other things. I know public safety uses it quite a bit as a secondary means of communication. I know that a lot of cities are looking to become more smart, so they're looking for autonomous cars, they're looking for wireless metering and things like that. So I think the increase in data and increase in these services are only going to grow. And what Verizon is trying to do is target areas where there's going to be a lot of use and therefore allow the other sites around to work better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
So we'll open it up to public comment now, so our public hearing is open. So if you do have public comment, you can have a seat, and then we'll have folks who wish to make a comment, please come to the podium. And again, please state your name and your address, and don't be shy. So I see someone in the back, come on up. Good evening.
Sue Timberlake. And that tower's going to be about 25 feet from my house, my roofline, and it's actually inside my fence. And when they changed the pullout this past year, I want to put a driveway on that side of my house, and the guys were very nice. They moved it another three feet to the side so that I have a shot at doing that. So I'm not against cell towers. I actually put a microcell in my house in Covington because I had no cell service, so I had a repeater that I put in, which is a microcell. I don't understand exactly, excuse me, I didn't get a lot of sleep last night, I don't understand exactly what the watts are and which particular frequencies. You said 4G, but 4G is 700 megahertz. I believe that you mean 5G and 6G, so I want you to specifically say which frequencies, how much the wattage is.
I'm just going to ask you to keep kind of talking to us.
Sorry.
We'll make sure that we get all that information.
My voice is, I'm losing my voice, I think I'm sick. Anyway, what the voltages are, you know, the wattage, the power, and what the actual frequencies are, so that you can see them. I read your documents very carefully, and like I said, I don't, I don't understand given what you just said. RF frequency, sorry, I just made a few notes to make sure I got them all. I heard you say that there's a backhaul fiber optic cable, and I hate Comcast, I would love to have FiOS, and so I will not give you any trouble if you gave me an optical fiber line to my house and to the five.
Wouldn't we all?
Yeah. And it's on your network, you're the right company, and I know Northampton has a non-exclusive license for optical fiber connections, so. And the third thing is that I have a bush that's right there, and when they put the pole in, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, when they put the pole in, I said, "Sure, just cut it, it's really brambley," but it is an ornamental bush. Now it's sort of dead center in the middle of it, and I assume you're going to ask me to just get rid of it. And so I want to make sure whether it's clear or not, whether that or my apple tree will be affected. And I want the power at the pole, because if I remember physics correctly, it's equal to the inverse square of the distance. And so I want to know what you're powering it with so that I can calculate the power at my roofline. And my upstairs, which is a little cape, it doesn't look like it's occupied, but there's actually an in-law apartment not far from there. And the third thing is, and I think some of my other colleagues will say this, why not the cemetery? If you're trying to cover the school, why not come in from that side or from the front of the school if you're trying to get all the people with cellphones? And unfortunately, I have AT&amp;T, so thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to keep taking comments from the public, then we'll ask you to come back and clarify some things, and we'll kind of recap issues. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Karen Schiappel, and I live at 211 Spring Grove Avenue, but I'm also the nurse at JFK. So I wanted to just say a few things. Personally, I'm opposed to the tower in my neighborhood and near the school. According to the Environmental Health Trust, most government regulations on allowable public exposures are set too high to protect the public. Furthermore, federal guidelines are based on research that doesn't consider special vulnerable populations such as children. The American Academy of Pediatrics raised concerns about increased exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic radiation emitted from cellphones and phone station antennae. The one question that I have is if this is being proposed for cellphone use, the vast majority of the inhabitants of JFK don't use cellphones. The students cannot use their cellphones, so it would just be faculty. So if that's what this is going to improve, enhanced cellphone use, it doesn't really apply. The other thing is for calling 911 and all of that, we have, I'm the one that calls 911. I'm in the building for an emergency, and we have landlines and we have walkie-talkies that are connected to our emergency medical personnel. So I guess I need clarification on that. I just, I just want to make clear that cellphone use has increased and everybody wants it, but I really feel that it's important that we, we have information to study the effects on the human body and long-term risk to health regarding cell tower radiation. And I feel that I would like this tower, if it needs to happen at all, I would like this tower to be not near JFK. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? So I think we will ask the applicant to clarify a couple of, couple of things, if you would. I don't know if one of you is better positioned to answer some of these questions, but maybe we can start with this.
Sure. I think I'll try to do everything as I can, and then I'll ask Eric to grab anything that I missed. And in addition, if the board feels that we missed anything, just let us know, and we'll continue to answer those questions. First of all, so I think the first question was, what is the frequency? So the frequency is 2100 megahertz or 2.1 gigahertz. That's the output frequency. The next question, and if the board will allow, I won't get into a dissertation, but I'll just do a little explanation. There was a question about four versus five versus six G. So this is 4G LTE technology, that's long-term evolution. And if you'll allow me, clarify, LTE is a standard. It's not necessarily tied to a particular frequency. So for example, in Western Massachusetts, Verizon Wireless uses 4G LTE technology at 700 megahertz, at 850 megahertz, at 1900 megahertz, and 2100 megahertz. So they all have the same radio access technology, they just have different frequencies. And among other things, that affects the wavelength of a signal, and that will in turn affect how far a signal might travel and its ability to work into buildings, into basements, into older structures, things like that. I'm going to defer to Eric and Jesse on the, on the bush and the question of the apple tree. I know there's some coordination that we're capable of doing, but I'll defer to them on that. There was a question of the total power. Jesse, I'll ask you to touch on that as well, but I'll just mention that the radio that Verizon will deploy is capable of 45 watts output, and I also know that the power itself will take a secondary power off the utility pole line, and I'll ask Jesse to kind of talk about that. I'm going to refer everyone to, there is a, a section in the Verizon Wireless Engineering Necessity Case that goes to radio emission safety. And if I may, I'm just going to read it into the record.
Sure.
A common question we hear on our wireless site projects is, are the radio emissions safe? We go to great effort to ensure that all our projects meet the regulations set by the FCC to ensure safety of the public and our employees. There are a number of questionable sources of information available on this subject that are not supported by science. Below are links to three organizations that have performed extensive reviews of the science available on this subject and have good educational articles on the results of the research. Now, I don't, I don't mean to read that in any ways to suggest that any research that was done was not done with research or isn't reputable. That's just language in the documentation. But I just want to mention a couple of things. The FCC, I feel, has stringent standards for RF safety. In particular, the standards are five times, how should I say this? They require RF levels to be five times lower for the general public than for someone like me who is educated in RF emission safety. So I feel very confident that this facility is going to meet all of those standards. I've already modeled it and confirmed it. It's relatively low power, if you, you know, if you were to compare it to, you know, a cable television station or satellite TV. And there's some additional information in here that can be looked at. And I'll just say in addition, although I haven't read every part of the 1996 FCC law verbatim, I've read quite a bit of it, and one thing that always strikes me is that if you look at the number of people that were involved in putting it together, I mean, there were government officials from multiple agencies, there were RF emissions experts, there were professors from several different universities, there was public safety experts. Now, I really looked at it and said, "Wow, there were a lot of people with maybe a lot of different viewpoints and different, you know, prerogatives that came together to come up with some standards." So, you know, Verizon, again,'s public statement is that this site will comply with all FCC emissions. And then just to mention the E911 concerns, that's another really great one, and I agree for a lot of different emergencies, the most likely person to make a call is going to be emergency professional staff. And it's also true in a middle school that, you know, some of the, you know, calls are going to generate from staff, adults. But we do see increased usage from middle schools. Really depends on the family, whether they decide it's appropriate for their child to have a phone when they're 11 or 14. Those are all middle school ages. You know, and, you know, we also see, unfortunately, in cases of, you know, incidents in schools, the stories of students that talk about texting their friends, using Snapchat to let their friends know that they're safe and where they are and where to go, you know. And so we just want to, again, reemphasize, we're excited about the fact that having wireless service, we think, goes a long way to reducing the digital divide in communities and increases learning opportunities, especially in schools. But we're also proud of the fact that we think that robust wireless service goes a long way to ensuring public safety for everyone. And another thing I just want to clarify, I don't know if it was asked, but Eric mentioned it, even if you're not a Verizon customer, and this is true for all the carriers in the United States, if you make a 911 call and the only carrier that you can get is not yours, that call goes through. That's something that's, that's a national standard to make sure that everyone has access to emergency services. Derek or Jesse, if you'd like to add anything?
Yeah. I'd like to address the first question with regards to the bushes and the concern that they had around that. I can show you that on the pole itself, they actually do install the equipment, not in the back, but to the opposite side of traffic. And that's intended so if there is an accident and it hits the pole, it's on the backside of the pole. there won't, there won't be, uh, this equipment facing the pole, it'll be off to the side on the, uh, on the center of the pole. So, uh, that will help, but I think the other thing that we might be able to do is, I can talk to construction. We can either flag something around it saying that we need to be careful and not, uh, go deep into this, the back portion of a pole where the, uh, bushes are, and, uh, maybe, uh, coordinate with you. Maybe I could get your information, so when they do come, they can talk with you and, and make sure that there's, um, uh, your concerns are being met with regards to, uh, how they approach the pole for installation.
I would just add, um, that the equipment, um, the radio equipment is, uh, over eleven feet off the ground. It's about twelve and a half feet to the center, so that's most likely above the bush. And, uh, like he said, um, downstream of normal traffic, uh, sort of at a five-foot level so they can read it, would be, um, uh, the, the meter for the, for the secondary power service.
But there'll be nothing on the ground, it, it's all mounted and elevated.
Corner border, is this interactive or do I wait till they're done?
No, you'll wait, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I would add there, too, is that the, um, the pole is actually owned by the utility purveyor.
Yes.
Um, Verizon Wireless actually gets a license on that pole.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the pole was changed out, but that's a re- as a result of them determining that the pole needed to be changed.
Right.
So that's, that's not necessarily something we request. Um, it's done through that licensing process.
Yeah.
And it takes a long time, it's.
Yeah, but we might be able to post a notice, uh, just, uh, stressing the concerns that she has.
I think there was a couple of questions about maybe the power. Um, the power that was said before, that was, that's the wattage that the radio, um, emits. Um, this particular site, um, which is typical for most cell sites, um, it would have a, a hundred amp, uh, service, uh, single phase, um, very similar, uh, to what you have, may have on a, a normal, uh, apartment or single-family residence. Um, it doesn't necessarily need a hundred amps, but, uh, and generally, a hundred amps, uh, is the least amount of service that you can request from the utility purveyor. Uh, generally, each radio, um, gets a, a, a breaker of about twenty amps. Uh, so that'd be like, uh, similar to the amperage of, of, uh, maybe an outlet string in your house.
Thank you.
And then, um, with regards to, uh, the nine one one calls, too. Um, although, uh, it was, um, pointed out that, uh, the calls do get made in the school, we're concerned also about the areas outside the school, whether someone's playing soccer, uh, and other people are in and around the area. So it's, um, it's good that they have that, it, within the building, and we're, uh, considering the other aspects of the, uh, potential of needing a nine one one call. Um, Verizon is a big company, but, uh, all of the people in this room are potential customers. Uh, they care very much about their installations, uh, they comply with all federal, state, and local laws. Uh, they continue to do that and strive for that. Um, but they do want to make sure that they, uh, they're responsible and, uh, a good neighbor to the, uh, the town and the city.
Thank you. Can you give me that call?
So quickly, Sue Timberlake again. So quickly doing the math, I'm getting there's three radios pointed in three hundred and sixty degrees, twenty amp circuits, fifteen amps per radio, which three times fifteen is forty-five amps that you came up with. Am I doing that right? Does that sound right to you?
So there's actually only a single radio?
Oh, there's only, it doesn't go three sixty?
Well, the antenna.
The antenna goes three sixty.
Oh, okay, I thought you said there are multiple, um, three.
No, just, just a single radio that goes into antenna and then broadcasts a signal in a direct three sixty direction.
And so there's twenty amps per, um, so there's... Sorry, I can't read my own handwriting here. So I get sixty amps, but maybe I'm mistaken in that. And then a hundred amp for just service for the whole pole. Um, so I heard you say twenty-one hundred megahertz, and you said, well, they do seven hundred and eight fifty, nineteen hundred, twenty-one hundred in Western Mass. On this pole, is it gonna have three G capability, four G, five G, and six G? So it'll have all the frequencies for the new? Is that a yes?
No, this pole is only going to have four G capabilities.
So just twenty-one hundred?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I still want the optical fiber connection to my house.
Oh.
Oh, and the last thing, I forgot. So when you turn that box around, I'm gonna be sitting on my swing in my apple tree and looking right at it. So instead, I'd like to propose, because he's not here, John Martin, my neighbor, if you could just turn it? So that he would look at it, sorry.
I'll just speak to one of those points, which is the, it's the FiO service. So, uh, I will openly admit, I am in Springfield and I want FiOs, too. But, um, what, what I can't say is that the introduction of, of Verizon fiber at this utility pole will in any way affect the company's decision to where they install FiOs next. But what I can say is that one of the nice things about having this technology, um, in, in a localized area and safely, you know, brought to homes, is that it does allow homeowners more choices. For those homes, um, that will benefit the most from this service, um, um, safely entering their homes, um, in many cases, you can buy Verizon products, um, that will take that LTE signal and convert it to Wi-Fi. So a lot of people, after, um, noticing this new technology, will cut the cable cord and invest in, um, you know, that type of alternative, uh, technology. So, um, it's an option and, you know, um, it's something every individual, you know, consumer has to decide for themselves, but, um, that's another potential added benefit both to the company and the neighborhood.
Great.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. We do have one more hearing on our agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I apologize, and maybe they'll have some of the same issues, but not, you know, my neighborhood. Um, so, uh, shoot, I just forgot my train of thought. I have completely forgotten it, so I, I apologize for that. It was an important question that I forgot, but I'll have to save it for another day, so.
Thank you.
I will comment that if you remember it and we move on to another, oh.
So, when I lived in Belmont, the Verizon person would walk around with us. I used to help the, um, the Board of Selectmen do the hearings. And so if the landowners or the neighborhood said, please, can you come just show us? Do you guys do that, and is that an option from this hearing as part of this process?
What, what would they show you in particular?
The box, which bush I'd let him cut down, you know, all that stuff. Because I, I assume the bush has to go, but it is an ornamental bush. So I'd love to have somebody say, yeah, you know, we're gonna cut this half and it'll look like, you know, the half of a, you know, look like the, um, uh, when the electric poles, you know, you see the tree with the big hole in it. It's like, you know what, I'd really rather not.
Yeah.
Is there a way to do that with whoever the service is that will, um, do the?
So I understand, um, that from the, the survey, that the bush is actually in the right-of-way? So that, so it isn't on your property, Ludd, it's on the?
It's inside the original wooden fence, they all are. The corner fence is still there, I put up a metal fence, but there's a wooden fence.
Yeah.
And where they moved the pole to is actually inside that. And, you know, those old property lines, that was one of the first houses down there in fifty-two, so. But I guess what I'm saying is that if they need to take the whole bush,
Right.
I'd like to say that to them, it's not out of the question, but I just wanna see what the options are given.
I think my understanding is that, that, um, that that isn't necessarily only Verizon, that because it's in, technically in the right-of-way, that DPW has purview over it? So I don't know what the right?
The pole company was great, they told me about the, the cell tower coming, so it was actually part of the process that... So they, they warned me, I'm just saying that I'm used to having the company say, yeah, we'll, we'll have somebody walk around and we'll figure out how to cut this out so that it.
Yeah, and that's not something that we would condition, or not something we can ever mandate.
Is this zoning or special permit, or what is this?
This is the planning board, and this is a site plan review.
Site plan, and then it goes to the, um, city council?
So there's a pro- so there are a couple of things. This is site plan review, the board can't say no to a permit unless it doesn't meet the technical standards.
Thank you.
Um, it's a majority vote. Um, this, because it's a pole in the right-of-way, it may need other approvals. It's not a new pole, so city council has.
Well, they put in a new pole that's taller and in a different spot.
So let me finish.
Okay, sorry.
Um, the pole, pole hearings are required by city council for new poles. This is new equipment on a pole, there may be some licensing that is required by the city for adding to a utility that's in the public right-of-way. I don't, I don't believe it goes to city council, um, but it would, um, but there may be, so the, the mayor's office would be able to tell Verizon whether it needs to, what, what other licenses might be required from the city's side.
So this might be it?
So this part is just about approving telecommunications systems on an existing pole. Because it's on an existing pole, it's site plan and not special permit. Um, you could, if there was a concern about, um, removing the bush, you could require a permit condition that says, you know, a replacement on the property. If you felt, if the board felt like it was appropriate to replace any vegetation that was being removed, you could certainly put that as a condition.
Yeah, and I guess what I was really asking for was the condition that I get shown, and I can easily say, just take it, you know, be done with it, it's totally fine, or can we save it? Which takes somebody looking at it and seeing how awful it's gonna look in the spot, not replacing it somewhere else on the property. And that may not be within your purview. And the last question is, who gets the pole attachment fee? Who, there's a fee involved, there's a pole attachment fee. Do you know who gets that?
Well, we, we have licenses with the pole owners, which is, uh, national grid.
National grid, thank you, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Karen Schiappo again. Full disclosure, I'm a Verizon customer, and, uh, I love my service as it is right now. Um, I just, so I just wanna clarify, so this, this, the objective of this project is to improve telecommunications. And so it, it's my understanding that this mini-cell, uh, has a short range from five hundred to one thousand feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanna reiterate that cell phones are not allowed, it's the policy of JFK. So the students, six hundred and twenty students who may have a cellphone are not supposed to be using it, and it's the, our policy. So, um, I, I just, I just wanna say that. And the other comment I wanna say is, uh, it was mentioned that the FCC, um, the FCC hasn't reviewed their standards since nineteen ninety-six. And cellphone use has increased substantially, and I feel very strongly that we need to look at the health hazards of an increased exposure. Um, right now, we're, there are three hundred million cell phones in use in the United States, and so I, I appeal to you to please not support this project.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lori Dettin-Bur, and I live at two twelve Spring Grove Ave. And the que- I did do some reading about, you know, the, you know, the nineteen ninety-six and some research since then, and it seems that there's enough question in, in my mind about potential health, uh, risks, that I wonder what other locations have been considered. It sounds like, you know, uh, one of the towers is on, on the top of a mountain and another is on a smokestack, and I'm wondering if less populated, um, locations for this have been considered or ruled out, or how that, um, is logical? Because to me, it seems that if we have the option to not go in a densely populated area, why not do that?
Thank you.
So, um, this question about safety, um, the board, cities actually don't have the ability to turn down telecommunications facilities if they, um, if it is shown that they're meeting... I mean, you have, you have certain, um, jurisdiction to, um, determine whether you believe that it's filling a gap. But the standard is the cities have to accept these systems, and nineteen ninety-six is the most recent data from the FCC. You, the city cannot turn down a project because someone provides evidence about, um, or concerns about safety, because it all falls on, as long as they're meeting the FCC regulations, there's nothing the board can do. Um, they've shown that they're filling in a gap in the system, which is what's required in the zoning ordinance to show that they're doing that. So there's a difference between the tall towers and these small cell towers, as you've, you know, as was explained in the application and the presentation, is it's meeting different, um, demands. Um, and these are filling in the gaps in, you know, in small geographic areas. And you guys approved two others a couple of months ago, uh, or four others, actually, um, essentially accomplishing the same thing, filling in gaps between, you know, bigger systems.
So at this point, the way that the, the board sort of does its, its work is, we have our public hearing, we hear from the public, um, and then at a certain point, we close the public hearing so that the board can have discussion about what we've heard. Um, sometimes we keep the public hearing open if we feel like we wanna ask some more technical questions from the applicant. Um, but if we feel like we have all the technical information that we need to have a discussion about the merits of the project, um, then it's customary for us to close that public hearing and then deliberate amongst ourselves in front of you, um, so that you can hear everything that we're thinking about. Um, so I guess I would ask my fellow board members if we would like to keep it open, because we may have questions of the applicant, we can do that, um, but.
As long as it's new stuff, right? Unless, uh, you know, as long as they come and bring in new stuff, new information, information that has not been brought up yet.
Right.
Right? Otherwise, you keep on repeating, and then.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep the public hearing open for now, but have discussion among ourselves. We may ask for some clarification on a couple of things. Um, so as Carolyn said, you know, we, we can't deny, uh, you know, unless, um, the applicant has not shown that they are filling a gap. I, I do, I am sensitive to, to the broader concerns that were raised, um, you know, and, and it sounds like outside of the city of Northampton, that there maybe should, the FCC maybe should prioritize a review of updating its standards. Um, you know, I don't know what, you know, how we can organize to help make that happen, but it isn't something that we can do this evening, um, in the context of this particular site plan review. Um, you know, it, it, it is a s- I was surprised to see in the application that it is a fairly small unit, you know, that it's in scale with the, the pole itself. It, you know, I was worried before I opened it up that it would be a sort of behemoth thing, but it is, you know, a twenty-four inches tall, fifteen inches diameter, it does seem fairly small. Um, so a- aside from that, you know, I, I don't have other specific concerns about the installation itself.
To me, the main issue is location, where it is located, or I think that's what I'm hearing, right? Um, and I think that is a reason to be on that spot, right, guys?
That's correct.
So you cannot move away from JFK, you cannot move away some, a couple of feet, feet, uh, away from the bushes or the kind of stuff.
Right, I, I'll just, um, briefly say, 'cause I respect your point about, um, not wanting to repeat ourselves, that, um, you know, the, from day one, our, our purpose was to, uh, locate on existing infrastructure in and around, um, the middle school for the purposes of, um, aiding service at the middle school, aiding ingress and egress, uh, around the middle school. Um, and I'll just make another comment, um, that, uh, we see more and more, a- a- as Eric mentioned, the comment about, um, you know, people cutting their home lines, but in particular, uh, a growing percentage of the total wireless usage, um, that is being used in the United States is indoors. So, um, yes, in, in some cases, when we're trying to cover very large gaps in service, it's still appropriate to, uh, build large facilities, and in some of those cases, they can be built, um, in a lot of different locations. But what we're trying to do is provide dedicated service, um, in a small geographical area where we have identified the need. And so for, um, that reason, yes, this facility, um, needs to be in this area.
Just one more thing I wanted to say, it seems that the guys are there to serve and to expand existing business, right? To serve the community and expand Verizon business, right?
Absolutely.
I'm just trying to see how I can think about it, because, as you said, right, you cannot say no. That's what I understand. But just trying to understand this whole discussion, why the, the community is reacting to, why you guys are here, or why do you want on that location? Um, I'm just, um, and I think you already. and I think you already explained how much you serve the community, right? The school, that's right?
Yeah, I, I think what, I think what the, you know, why are we here? We're, we're here to get a petition, uh, approved, um, so that we can enhance our service. But in addition, you know, we're all here as professionals and experts to answer your questions and hopefully educate, um, the community. So to the end that it's beneficial to the public and the board to keep asking questions about need and, and how it works. We're happy to continue to do that, so long as you think it's appropriate.
That's more my purpose of asking the questions, just to see the, you know, the community is here, you guys are here, and you articulate these ideas and.
Yep.
Right?
If the JFK, uh, the, if the school wasn't involved at all, if it didn't even exist, this would be supplying better service for Bear Hill, which is the condo community up top, correct? And it would be serving the community to the south, I guess that would be. And it would seem like there's a lot of residents around the school, if the school didn't exist, since you've been told that they're not allowed to have cells, phones there anyway. So, my question is, does this small cell tower, forgetting that JFK i- i- is what you're saying you're trying to help, will it help others around it?
Absol- absolutely. I- if I could refer you again to this, um, coverage, um, map that just has a single map on it. Um, if, if you look again, um, you know, uh, there's three different coverage levels. And again, green is your indoor service, yellow is your in-car service, uh, gray is your outdoor, uh, service. And you'll see it covers, uh, a pretty expansive, um, number of streets. Um, it does get over to the, um, you know, at least to the periphery of the condo complex in terms of providing outdoor service or in-car service. Um, it provides a number of streets or portions of streets with indoor service. And, and it is, um, a fairly dense residential area, which is, uh, along with commercial downtowns like the one Northampton has, are typically our two, um, greatest areas of demand and growth. Um, so yes, it has, um, benefits to the whole neighborhood, uh, which includes the middle school.
Jenna, any questions or comments?
I don't think so. Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Well, just great dialogue, right?
Yes, I'm glad that, yeah, and I think you're right, it's an opportunity to get the public talking to Verizon.
And just to add to that, one of the things we should have added, uh, at the very beginning, so, when we select a pole, it's a combination of working with RF and with, with regards to a need. But we also have limitations on, uh, what national grid and Verizon, uh, allow us to use. So there's certain poles we can't use. We can't use poles that have transformers, we can't have, use poles that have too many risers on it. We can't use poles that have, uh, too much primary power and depending on what that voltage is. So, we are, that does narrow down where we can go. And then that, in combination with where RF is looking to offload, is kind of where we start to, uh, narrow down the locations. And then, um, I just wanted to add, with regards to, uh, existing laws and safety, um, Verizon is a SEC licensed facility. Should any law or if SEC license requirements change, they have to change with it. So it's, if it, if it changes in a certain direction, they will follow it to be compliant.
Any additional comments?
No, I, I just tell, I used to have Verizon and I changed for AT&amp;T. But that's not the point. Just bring some humor here.
Uh, if there aren't other comments or discussion from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Um, motion.
Are you, are you still gonna discuss, uh, three nine, uh, you gotta, you gotta let the site?
Yes.
Yes, we will, yep, that's a separate agenda item. Yep, it's a separate site plan for us.
Okay, okay.
So let's move. Okay, uh, I move the, the motion, entertain the motion to.
Close the public hearing?
Yeah.
And is there a second? All those in favor? And is there another motion?
Motion to approve the site plan for Verizon Wireless to add panels to the existing pole near one ninety Spring Grove Ave, Florence, um, map ID seventeen A dash seventeen. Um, with the condition that this, they still need to get other city permits as required.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Those opposed? So that site plan is approved. So our second seven PM hearing is also for Verizon for, um, a plan to add existing, uh, panels to a utility pole near three nine five Elm Street, Northampton, map ID twenty-four C dash three seven.
Good evening. Um, the second pole in question is a utility pole that's in front of three ninety-five Elm Street. Uh, it's across the street from Northampton High School. The panel antenna at this location is also proposed to be on top of the utility pole. The same equipment will be installed on the body of the pole with, uh, the supporting equipment with electrical, uh, meter. Uh, no ground equipment is required or proposed. Uh, the pole is screened from the house that's located in front of us, similar to the other, uh, application that was proposed to earlier. Um, the house, uh, and.
Uh, nearly identical, uh, proposal to the previous, um, similar, uh, needs for this particular site. Um, again, very similar, uh, equipment going on the pole. You know, it's a little bit different. Uh, this pole's got, uh, primary located on the top as well. Um, with that, we have a little bit different rules, uh, from the utility company, uh, but the same equipment. Um, and, and basically the same connection of that equipment, uh, applies in this location. Um, so the existing pole here is about, uh, twenty-eight feet tall, so that would make it a, a thirty-five foot class pole. Um, it's got secondary and primary power on it, along with some existing communication lines. Verizon here is proposing to locate at the top of the pole. Um, and it's got a little bit of different antenna proposed here, uh, but same basic, basic, uh, function. Uh, this one's a little bit more directed to a particular, uh, location, but we'll have, uh, RF talk a little bit about that. Um, and we have to relocate a couple of things on this particular pole through our licenses with national grid. But, uh, the same general things apply, we have an antenna located at the top that propagates signal. Um, at the bottom, we have a meter and a disconnect, uh, with pull secondary power from existing sources. Um, we have a, uh, a communication line, if there's not fiber on the pole, it gets put there. Um, and then we have our RF equipment here that, uh, generates that signal. Similar to the other site, um, the equipment is located, you know, downstream from traffic. This would be on the, sort of the backside of the pole. Um, and, uh, the only real difference to note here is that this antenna, uh, proposed here is, is, is directional. It's got a particular azimuth, it's pointing in a particular direction to, to get, uh, to solve a particular problem. So I would defer to RF to talk a little bit more, uh, a- about the need on that particular site.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Jade Latori, RF engineer for Verizon Wireless, home address one twenty-two Forest Hills Road in Springfield. Um, my colleague Mary Ellen is passing out an engineering necessity case for you to review and was included in the application. Uh, this facility is called Northampton High School, uh, Small Cell Maths. Uh, I prepared an engineering necessity case, uh, and it also was updated, uh, in September. Um, a lot of this information, as you might imagine, is very similar to the previous, uh, site plan application we just discussed. So, uh, out of respect for the board, I'll, I'll just kinda highlight some of the, um, high level differences. Um, I'm gonna call your attention to a couple of pieces of information in here. Um, much like with the first site plan application, you'll see a set of maps in this document, um, the title being Coverage at Twenty-One Hundred Megahertz. Um, and, uh, there's a couple of different facilities in here, so I, I just wanna call them out to you. Looking at the map on the left-hand side, you'll see in the middle, uh, there's a little, uh, dot that doesn't have a pie shape on it. That's Cooley Dickinson Hospital. Um, Verizon has an indoor wireless system in there, we only cover the inside of the hospital. I wanna clarify that because other carriers have antennas on the top of the hospital there. Um, there are two facilities that have pie shapes around them that are, um, shown color in and providing twenty-one hundred megahertz service. Again, the same four G LTE service we talked about in the first application. Uh, to the northwest in this document, you'll see Florence, which is that smokestack, um, in the middle of Florence. And then in the, uh, what would be the southeast corner, there's another facility. Uh, that's a, a rooftop facility that Verizon is on on top of Thorne's Marketplace. And that's where, um, most of the service comes from. I do wanna mention, and I, I do apologize, embarrassed to say this, but I, I made the same mistake on this map, um, that the coverage layers are the same. However, what you're not seeing is that behind that box is Verizon's, uh, co-location on King Street. There's a very large tower, I think it's close to two hundred feet, and Verizon is on that as well. And that's where that coverage in the northeast corner of this map is coming from, so I, I do apologize for that. Um, and then if you look towards the center of the map and, um, very close to the center, you'll see the proposed application of a single pie shape. And, uh, if you look at the second map, the map on the right side of this, uh, page, you'll see proposed twenty-one hundred megahertz coverage. And you'll see, uh, an area of green, yellow, and some gray, um, colored in to reflect, uh, what the proposed facility is modeled for coverage. Um, I'm going to refer you then to the next page, which also has the title, bless you, uh, Coverage at Twenty-One Hundred Megahertz. Um, it's a zoomed-in map, um, and this is an additional map that, um, we were asked to provide for the board. Um, a couple of things I wanna mention, uh, the one difference is that the map was included in this. The other thing I wanted to mention was that there was a request from the board, in particular for this site, to kinda get a visual as to how this facility relates to and works with, um, two, uh, four facilities that were approved by the board back in March. Um, a proposed facility on Riverside Drive, and then another proposed facility on Elm Street. And you can see both of those facilities, um, on this map, uh, with circles around them. Uh, they're not colored in, um, and they're not broadcasting because they're not physically built yet. Um, Verizon is working through its regulatory, um, approval process, um, right, right now, actually. I, I'm doing some of that work to get those approvals. Um, but I, I, um, wanted to make sure I showed them so that you kinda had a feel for, um, how, uh, my RF design envisions kinda, um, the growth of wireless service in this area. So, um, as Mr. Moreno kind of alluded to, this facility is a little bit different in that the coverage is targeted. And instead of having omnidirectional coverage, it's focused at one point, namely, uh, Northampton High School. Um, in particular, the high school, um, is, uh, another facility that in the last year, I, we walked with, uh, Mr. Bagan from the IT and School Department, um, and found there to be some notable issues with, um, lack of service and lack of capacity. Um, the same principles apply, uh, the only difference being that, uh, obviously with a high school, uh, cellphone usage is clearly more accepted, and this is a, a fairly, you know, larger facility for four grades, along with a larger, you know, uh, professional staff. Um, so, so the antenna, which is similar in size, is, is more of a panel instead of a cylinder. Um, if you wanna see a detail of that, if you look at the site plan and you look at, um, page C four, on the, uh, thank you Jesse, on the lower left-hand side, you'll see the antenna detail. So the antenna, um, i- is, uh, twenty-seven, uh, point, twenty-seven feet, four inches in height. So just a little over two feet, instead of two feet exactly. And it's six point five inches in, uh, depth. And so that antenna is, um, like, uh, Mr. Moreno said, is, um, is sectorized. It's pointed at a specific goal, essentially. The goal being to make sure we drive service into the high school, um, as well as some of the surrounding areas behind it. Um, and that's really the, the key major difference here, but the, the theme is the same. Uh, you know, Verizon investing in right-of-way infrastructure to help grow, uh, our reliable service areas. Um, that has great impact to public safety and, uh, innovation and education. And again, the same concept, you know, whether it's school buses, or, or parents, or professionals, uh, it in, it assists with, um, creating that capacity for ingress and egress. So those surrounding facilities, when there are congregation points, whether it's, you know, um, schools in session or right before school or right after school, this handles the local traffic. So that the larger facilities can handle their larger footprints without getting overburdened. Um, everything else is essentially the same in terms of frequency, in terms of the technology, um, we provide and the benefits. So, um, what, I'll certainly, again, be available for any questions you may have. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, thank you again for taking the time to hear us.
Just one quick clarification.
Sure.
Those other two sites that we had previously approved on Riverside Drive and on Elm Street, those are omnidirectional? Can you just remind?
They're both omnidirectional, that's correct.
So with the one on Riverside Drive, there would be a little bit of overlapping coverage?
Yeah, yep, that's absolutely correct. And, and I'll kinda, I'll, um, extend my conversation on that. What I wanted to show on this, um, map is a, is a great point regarding, um, wireless service. So, so wireless service, uh, in RF design is a, is a tricky thing. You need to have some overlap because there's a period of time where your mobile device, whether it's your cellphone or your tablet or something in your car that has a signal, um, can communicate to both facilities and measure the power from both of them to decide which one it's gonna hand off to. That's why you can drive from, you know, here to upstate Vermont and, uh, and hopefully not lose your signal. Because the towers talk to one another. But if you have too much overlap, um, that reduces your signal quality. Because you have too many locations that more or less have the same signal. So what ends up happening is that the device says, I wanna be here, no, I wanna be here, no, I wanna be here. So you need to cover, create areas of overlap but minimize them. Uh, and that's what we're trying to show here, that, uh, there is coverage close enough to the other facilities that there will be some overlap for ubiquitous service, we call it, but not so much that they're going to interfere dramatically.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This particular site has, uh, the same benefits and the same, uh, information, so I won't, uh, repeat myself. But, uh, one of the things I do wanna add is that, uh, when Verizon looks to meet a need in a spec- specific area, uh, we're gonna find that we're now going to be going more and more into residential areas because the industrial areas have their sites and other structures have their sites. But when you get into an interior, uh, place like this, there's not too many options for us. We think that placing them on a utility pole such as this is minimal for the benefit that we're providing. Otherwise, it's a much larger facility. The downside is it's a smaller footprint and we have a couple more of them. But we believe that the minimization of the installation compared to a full site, uh, would be beneficial and more conducive for a residential area. Um, again, this pole was chosen because of the characteristics of the pole and, um, the approval of the utility owner for us to co-locate on it. So that necessitated the need to be there. Uh, but we, um, which, uh, we believe that this, in conjunction with other types of installations, is, is the best, uh, for this particular area. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Um, no, it was just the question you made, because I thought you just approved one not long ago, right? So eventually we have so many poles all over, so that's, I was trying to understand, how does that work? Uh, because the one, and, uh, was not too far, the one we approved, right? On, uh, the corner across the, uh, Kensington, Kensington and Elm Street? Um, it seems so close, um, that I, I just. It seems so close that I just...
Yeah, I'll just generally say that...
Just that eventually you have so many poles all over as we encroach into the residential that to me is kind of a...
They're all existing poles.
Yeah, yeah, no, but in terms of, you know...
Right. No, I think I understand your question. Are we going to, you know, proliferate the entire city with these, this infrastructure? So, certainly I can't predict the future. And if I wish I had a crystal ball, I would go play the lottery right away. But, you know, that being said, in all seriousness, you know, we take a very targeted strategy. What we do every day is analyze our existing structures. And we do what essentially would be called a stress test for capacity. We evaluate where they're taking service, where we're dropping calls. If we're providing service, are we doing it in a robust way so that the customers are getting what they pay for? Or are they getting, you know, a level of service that really is inadequate for what they pay for? And when we find that there's inadequacies, whether it's our call service, you know, or quality or capacity, you know, those are the areas we go after to offload. We think we do a really good job of it. You know, each one of these facilities, I can tell you, and I apologize, we, I could've done one more map to kinda show all three of them turned on, but they all do something different even though they're relatively close to one another. This one, the high school, is really designed to offload the high school and make sure that there's very robust service. You know, it's a, it's a three or four-story school, and we wanna make sure we cover all the floors. The facility on Riverside Drive is more residential. And in particular, it's in an area where we know our coverage is less than reliable. And we're excited to build that facility to eliminate a gap. Versus the facility on Elm Street, which is also very residential and heading a little bit closer to Smith College, where you've got some dense homes. You've got apartments with maybe, you know, four to eight different students in them. You've got more on-street traffic, both from vehicles and people walking to and from downtown. So, they all have their particular locations. I mean, I'll say generally that Verizon invests a lot of money in its existing facilities. And that's kinda the easiest thing for us, right? Because we, you know, we don't have to bring new fiber, we don't have to bring new power. You know, we change the radios, we change the antennas, and that works out great for us. It's more work for us to come before boards and announce a commitment to bring power and fiber and antennas to a new facility. Even a small one like this takes coordination between our team, the wireless team, Verizon Landline, National Grid. There may be Mass Broadband Institute or Comcast or Charter, you know, or a fire station, you know, emergency line on there, all of which may have to be adjusted to make room. So, there's still a lot of coordination on a small site. So, I think the fact that we have as many in this location reflects Verizon's commitment to wireless services in the city and for our customers. And I think if I could just say generally, you know, where are we gonna build these facilities? We're not gonna build them everywhere, but we're certainly going to target them in areas where population is more dense and growth is more likely to come. As well as areas that maybe aren't as dense but either have a coverage issue that isn't so great to warrant a larger facility. But taking advantage of existing infrastructure, fairly innocuous compared to what's there now with an existing pole, we strike a nice balance. I hope that answers your question, you know, as best as I can. Thanks.
The point is that always when you guys come, that is always a neighbor or neighborhood who'll come along with. So, that's what make me wonder why, why that is this kind of rejection. Yeah, I mean...
Some public comments. So, if there are, I think there are probably some folks here who would like to make public comments. So, if so, please come to the podium and again, state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jerome Brosard. I'm at 401 Elm Street. And that's roughly the second closest house to the site. First, I wanted to point out a couple of possible errors or issues. The notification for the meetings tonight listed Verizon as being the applicant with instructions to go to your site and find the app, find the listing with that name. But that is not, that is not there. It's listed under National Grid. So, the likelihood that there are interested parties who would've wanted to come is, you know, is clearly there.
Thank you.
You're missing people who otherwise might've been here. Couple of other issues. The plans, as I was reading them, the presentation seemed to indicate that it would be the existing pole that would be used. The plans pretty clearly show that a new pole that's slightly higher will be put in. So, I think that should be addressed. The other issue with the plan, this, this drawing right here, which is kinda the detail of where the antenna's gonna be located, actually shows the antenna being pointed at our neighbor's house, my neighbor's house, 399, not at the high school. So, I'm sure that's an error, but an error that significant to me calls into question.
And can you clarify which specific...
So, this is, it's the one with all the drawings.
Does that say C four at the bottom left?
Uh, it does.
At bottom right?
So, the center, the center one that has, it's the plan view, the top-down. So, it's showing the street at the top, the grassy section below. And if you know anything about this site, the grassy section below is on the, the, not the high school side. It's on the neighbor's side or the residential side. And the antenna shown here is clearly pointing away from the high school, not at the high school. So, that's a fairly significant error in the drawing. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Thank you.
Let's see. I've been at North Hampton, I've been at 401 Elm Street for almost twenty years. I've had excellent Verizon coverage during that entire time, even down in my basement, until about three to six months ago. In which, in that, at which point the, there were obviously changes made in their network, which made the coverage much, much worse. I can only actually make a good phone call on the second floor on one side of the house now. So, the need for this right at the moment is somewhat manufactured by the way they are managing their network. I would like to suggest that this is, well, let me say that these drawings make everything look very flat. This area is actually fairly hilly. The Elm Street at that point is going down, well, downhill if you're kind of going northwest, I guess. And the houses right near that are actually quite a bit uphill from this location. So, there was a mention of the pole being screened from the houses and maybe the very base of the pole is. But the middle section and the top of the pole are clearly visible. In fact, when I'm on our second floor, I pretty much can read out the top of the pole. So, this equipment will be directly in eye line. It's not at all screened. I would ask that, since this is a facility that clearly is primarily benefiting the high school, that perhaps a high school location would be more appropriate. And there's certainly a fairly available pole that's not too far off from the entrance of the high school. That's about a hundred feet back from the building or so, which I think would be a worthy consideration. This particular location, that, that, where the antenna will be will be roughly forty feet from my neighbor's house, and he'll probably speak in a moment, and about sixty to seventy feet from my house. So, quite close. I would like to clarify, in this case also, the actual power output at the, at the antenna. And when that's addressed, I'd, I'd wanna make sure that if you're noting power output, is that power output per channel or radio, and how many channels and radios are involved? Because that'll impact certainly the total of power output. Let's see. Wanted to make note, just regarding the health effects, which is why I think probably most of the population is, gets concerned about these sorts of things. Verizon's own links that they send you to on, in their proposal, the World Health Organization, American Cancer Society, and the FCC. In the American Cancer Society link that you go to, they make note that there are, there is an international cancer organization that does list RF as a possible carcinogen. Additionally, I think it was probably in the FCC documents, that they note that for roof-mounted, well, in all the documents, they all really deal with macro cells, which are the really big towers like on King Street. No one's actually really talking about the small cells yet because they're actually fairly new. But when, with regards to macro cells, one of the things they talk about is that there are roof-mounted ones and that they acknowledge that care should be taken when being on a roof and doing maintenance near those facilities. And with this antenna forty feet away from a house at eye level, that's actually kind of in line with a roof-mounted design. So, seems that additional caution would be warranted there. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Jeff Boloney. I live at 399 Elm Street, which is the, I think, basically the closest house. I don't really have much to add other than I just wanted to say that I agree with Jerome's concerns. And also noticed the fairly sudden degradation in Verizon service at my house as well, which would, I would definitely love to get some clarification on if that was something that they saw. And if this is something that would address that, it looked like our houses were in the coverage map. And, yeah, and also wanted just to reiterate that the screen, like, the comment about the pole being screened is confusing, I think, 'cause it's, I can see it on my office window, like, look at it several times a day. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Could we have the applicant just do a couple of quick clarifications about that power output and some of the other items?
So, with reference to the comment regarding the antenna location, they are correct. It's supposed to be aimed towards the high school, not towards the opposite direction. We'll be happy to make that amended CDs and present that to the board. Apologize for that misunderstanding and the error that was on the plan. With regards to the screening, yes, the screening is on the bottom and not at the top. It's a large pole. And it will have the top portion of it exposed unfortunately. But everything will be directed towards the high school. With the concerns with the health issues, again, we're gonna abide and follow all of the guidelines and the current laws that we are required to follow per the FCC. Should those change, we'll also change and make those adjustments. And with regards to the coverage loss and the RF information, Jay will...
Just a couple of clarifications as requested by the public. So, I'm just gonna show this diagram here. Okay, so, so first there was, I'm just speaking to the mic. Oh, I might not be able to go forever, but that's okay. There, there was a question regarding the radio power and the number of channels. This is the same radio that's proposed at the previous facility, so it's a twenty-one hundred megahertz output frequency. It's a forty-five watt radio. There are four channels that are utilized, each at forty-five watts. I think the next question was, what is the, the power at the antenna? If that's okay, I'll demonstrate. So, the radio is co-located here at about the, the bottom of it is at twelve point five feet. Top of the, or I'll give you the midpoint of the antenna, which we call the center line. And again, I apologize, I'm on C three.
Yep.
It's at thirty-seven point five feet. So, there's, it would be, we can call it, let's just say in a perfect world, the line to go right up, it would be twenty-five feet of cable. We use a coaxial cable. It's half inch in diameter. So, coaxial cable has line loss to it. It's not significant line loss 'cause it's not a particularly long piece of cable. But I would estimate, based on my experience with these types of facilities, with about a one decibel amount of power loss. I didn't do the formal math calculation, but I would estimate it at maybe, you know, fifteen to twenty percent loss of power. So, that at the radio, the power that's transmitted out is closer to, say, thirty-six to forty watts with that line loss. There is gain in that antenna, much like when you're running cable down the street. At some point, you reach a point where the line gets weak and you have an amplifier. That's what the antenna serves as. So, there is gain into that antenna. Again, this is a directional antenna, so the majority of that gain is pushed towards the intended service area. And in this case, since it's directional as opposed to omnidirectional, the majority of the coverage is pushed towards the high school. There's, there's no antenna that can be physically designed to have no signal behind it. But again, if I refer you back to the coverage plot, you'll see that instead of this, this larger one that's zoomed in, you'll see as opposed to the previous presentation where you kinda have a circular map, you'll see for the most part that the coverage is pushed in the direction of the antenna pointing south. And there is some movement of the signal towards the southwest. And a lot of factors come into play. These, these modeling tools take into account the topography of the land, the height of the antenna, its orientation, power, existing infrastructure that might change the, you know, the signal strength once it's hit. But that, I believe, covers that question. There was a question about degradation in service. I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. So, you know, Verizon hasn't done anything to purposely degrade its service. If anything, we continue to invest in all of our facilities that are existing. And we're here tonight to again propose more facilities to further invest in the community. One thing that is known and is common in our part of the country is that our service is a lot better in the winter than it is in the spring, summer, and fall. And, and that's just physics. The wavelengths that we use for these frequencies turn out to be about a couple of inches, which is not too different than the size of a leaf. So, as the leaves come back, wireless signals do fade some. And some service that you might enjoy between, say, November and early April will be weakened between mid-April to, you know, late October. That's not uncommon. Just like any other company, we have a one-eight-hundred number that our customers can call if you have questions about your service, if it's degraded. Those questions get answered by our customer service team. And in every case, they eventually make your way back to people like me that analyze the area. And we take a look to see if this is a result of maybe an issue on an existing facility or a known issue. And the only other thing I'll add is, you know, sometimes degradation in service doesn't come from signal strength but actually signal capacity. We've seen explosive growth in our four G service since it was launched in 2010. Eric cited some of those stats for you. And sometimes we find our signal is the same strength, but there's just more people on it. There's, or there's just more people using it more often. We've read studies that show that the amount of usage on a device is directly correlated to the quality of the picture. So, you see if everyone with these jumbo iPhones, they probably use, watch more video than the folks with the little ones. It's a viewer experience thing. And so, these facilities... And so, these facilities are not only meant to allow us to enhance capacity, they're also meant for us to keep up with capacity. Because as we invest further in our facilities, as we add capacity, we find our customers just use them more and more. And so, we're here tonight to further invest in that service, because our customers have an expectation when they pay for service. They want it to be reliable, so that they can enjoy their service and that they can feel that it's safe. And they want it to be enjoyable. They want it to work for what they might want to do. And lastly, again, I'll just mention without regurgitating, that this site will be, will follow all FCC requirements and regulations for RF safety. And in addition, as Eric mentioned, you know, if, should our FCC regulations in this country change, Verizon will be required and will be happy to change with them. Sure, sure. And, and I'll just, Eric brought up another point, you know, degradation in, in service, you know. One of the possibilities, and something we experience, is that, you know, when schools come back in session, our facilities that might work great during the summer really start to struggle. And I cover all of Western Massachusetts, so I look at high schools, the twenty or so universities that we have out here, and we, we see that as well. And so, again, installations that are safely designed in and around schools, I think have a, a good positive impact on everyone. And again, this takes advantage of the existing infrastructure as opposed to, to a much larger project that, that might impede a non-existing infrastructure.
Can I just ask one more?
Sure.
Quickly quick question about the actual device itself that goes on the top of the pole. You know, this one is a little bit bigger than the prior application. Is there any, do you have any experience during like extreme weather events? Do we need to be concerned about the kind of stability or any, you know, if we're kind of adding height to the top of the pole, or being mindful of future extreme weather and, you know, and such?
So, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. First blanket comment. I, I have worked on and helped install through design over a hundred and twenty of these in Western Massachusetts. I've never had a problem with any of them falling over or antennas falling off. The, the companies that Verizon uses for construction have all of their appropriate certifications, not only for construction, but also electrical code. National Grid runs a structural on these before providing Verizon with a license. And, and that's important to note, because Verizon is requesting a license from National Grid. National Grid's primary service, and I don't mean primarily power, like, their main job is to provide service to communities and homes and businesses. So, it's in their best interest to make sure that we're providing an installation that's not going in any way impact the hundreds of other customers that might get electricity through some way or form through this pole. The only time in my professional career that I've ever seen an issue with antennas was in 2011, when the tornado hit Springfield. And even in that case, with very large facilities, and, and our antennas on the towers have much more wind, you know, load exposure. You know, they're sometimes six to eight feet tall, they can be a foot wide. And the only thing we saw in those locations was that in some cases, the antennas turned. And something that was supposed to be pointed at Springfield is now pointed at West Springfield. And we have to just go back up there and tighten it and put it back in place. And that's, that's my only professional experience on that. So, these are all designed to the latest state building codes. We work with Proterra extensively on a number of projects and very confident in their quality of service. They're right here out of Hadley. And we certainly appreciate to have a, a local A and E firm looking at these. They're neighbors too. So, that's my experience on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The only thing I was going to say is there was some concern about the height. But if I'm understanding this correctly, it looks like the, a new pole's being installed and that the sightline's actually going to be, the antenna will be high enough that they're actually, I think, going to see a pole where they're currently seeing a pole, not to the antenna, because the antenna's going to be above.
Right, because the pole will be a little bit bigger, a little bit taller than the existing.
So, it doesn't seem like there's going to be, I mean, I don't know exactly what the sightline is, but it doesn't seem like it's going to be a huge detrimental effect.
I was just going to clarify that. That was a good point. I did say that it was the existing pole. And what I was reading was the initial assessment on this pole when we walked it. What came back during the licensing was that they were going to, they're going to replace this pole. So, that is true. The existing pole here is going to be replaced. And the reason is, is so that this primary power that was once at the top of that pole has to be relocated down in order to put the antenna on top. So, that was a mistake on my behalf. Originally, when it was walked, the, the plan was to put it on top of the original pole. But like I said, the process takes, I mean, I think we walked this pole originally in, you know, almost a year ago. And during the course of that period, through the licensing, there's a lot of different things to look at. Could have been a structural reason, could be. One of the things that often happens is, one of the requirements to put a pole top on here is the age of the pole. And on a lot of the older poles, it's not stamped, and the newer poles, it is stamped. So, if the, if National Grid determines that the pole is over twenty years old, they'll automatically replace it if you're putting on equipment on the top. So, I, I'm not positive, but I surmise that happened in this case. I will say one other thing about the, the sketch here. That was in a very astute comment. He is correct. But I will say though, is that the RF design here calls for azimuth of a hundred and seventy degrees. And all that means is if north is zero in the antenna, if you started from the right and you went around, that a hundred and seventy degrees, the direction of the antenna is correct. It would have been built correct, but he is, the comment is correct in that the direction of travel on Elm Street is on the wrong side. And, and looking back at this, I know exactly how this happened. Because typically in drafting, we want north to be up. In this particular location, the direction of the antenna was south. And it was our attempt to sort of do that. You know, and that's my fault, I missed that. But one of, one of the things that we do check often against the design is the direction of the antenna. And the direction of the antenna is depicted correctly. So, I have all the confidence in the world that it would have been built properly. But with that being said, it's a minor technicality, we could certainly update that for the file. I'd be happy to do that, because it should be correct.
Thank you.
I'll just comment that this, then new pole, because it's a new pole that would go through, as far as I know, will go through city council.
The, a replacement pole?
Yeah. If it's going to be a replacement pole, I think it has to go through city council too. But that's on top of any other licensing that might be required for this equipment on an existing National Grid pole.
Any other discussion?
Can I make one more?
Sure, yes.
So, you made a point about the visibility of the equipment. I have a photo up at my bathroom window.
Sure.
So, I'm happy to, so this is out, and that, here's the pole. There's the top of the pole. It's going to be clearly visible.
Okay.
So, you see that? So, there's the pole, top of the pole. So, the, the additional equipment is going to be clearly visible and well in the sightline.
You see a lot of wires already.
Ah, yeah.
It's not the greatest view already.
Too bad we can't put everything underground. Because that's not a pretty sight now.
So, any, would we like to make a motion to, do we feel like we can have some board discussion and move forward? Does anybody like to close the public?
I was just going to pass around if there was any. It's kind of hard to tell in the drawings, they're far away, but this is an actual installation of what the thing kind of looks like. I think what you said is exactly right. The scale of it, it seems large in the drawings, but if you actually see it, it blends in pretty nicely. There's the scale of, of the antennas here as a, you know, as a function of the, of the pole. You can kind of see the equipment there on some sides. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Here, there's the radio there, the antenna at the top.
And same, what's the difference in these two?
This is the same exact site, it's just from a different vantage.
Oh, okay, great.
You know, one is looking at the side, right? One is looking at the back, where you don't see that.
Right.
You know, I can certainly sympathize with you, Butter, but just, I think, I wanted to make the point of what you said before, that, you know, as far as the alternative of a macro site, I think that you can get the idea of the scale, even when I zoom in, the scale of that equipment is relative to the pole is, is pretty small. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would I have to move on? Initiate a motion to approve a project?
First, we would close the public.
Yeah, we close it, okay.
Is this a motion to close?
Yes, is there a second for that? Jenna, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So, now we have discussion among the board, and then someone may make a, if we need to have additional discussion. If not, if folks feel like we've heard what we need to hear and we feel comfortable that they have met their requirements in their application, we can go ahead and make a motion.
I have no questions.
I think, I'm always sympathetic when butters are here and things are changing. But, you know, there clearly is a demonstrated need. I think this is a fairly, it's a fairly, it's certainly gentler than a large high voltage power line or a large freestanding cell tower. You know, I mean, it seems certainly better integrated than some other, some other facility options that may be out there. And I think, you know, again, as Carolyn said, this would require additional licensing and potentially go in front of city council as well. So, there will be other folks who are looking at this and hearing the same, the same pieces of information and making their informed, you know, informed decisions, so.
Can I initiate a motion? Two? Daniel reading that? I don't have the.
You'll need that.
I don't, couldn't find my, okay, to approve the. This one here. To approve the site plan Verizon wireless through our panels through existing utility pole near thirty-nine, three-nine-five Elm Street, North Hampton, map ID two-four-C dash thirty-seven. Approve, and approved with conditions? Any condition?
That all other licenses and, all of their licenses and permits are granted.
And then do you want to add, have an updated C four sheet?
Yes. With the proper direction? Yep, and that sheet C four is updated and provided with the file. Is there a second?
Second.
Jenna, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you, thank you very much.
So, we just have two A and Rs?
Okay. And our board has some additional business, so if you don't mind stopping to.
So, this first A and R is at the state hospital, the, on the north side of Ford Crossing. So, the cohousing site that you all approved a couple of months ago is in the northeast corner here. The TCB multifamily housing project is just north of here. And then south is already built out residential. You have, these are five lots to be carved off of Ford Crossing. You haven't approved the site plan for that yet. So, this is just for the creation of the lots, but they can't build on those lots till you approve the plan.
What's the funny little notch on that?
I think it has to do with a connection to this, or, this is the park lot here. So, there may be, I can't remember if there was a path through here that was on the TCB slot.
Got it. Someone like to make a motion?
What's the motion in this case?
This is.
Have the plan endorsed as an A and R.
So moved?
Yeah, so moved, yeah.
Would you like to second, Krista?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Okay.
Those, no.
Okay, and then the second one is actually, there are two, this is two A and Rs, but it's just on one plan sheet, because it's in generally the same area. These are lots that were approved several years ago out on West Hampton Road. And as, the one on this side is just swapping some land between these two flag lots. The property owner was enthusiastic about their landscaping, and so did a little bit of landscaping technically over on the other property. So, what they're going to do is just carve that piece off and, and give it to the person.
I'm a debt.
That's, that's very kind, right? Is that like very kind?
Yeah, I mean, it just helps with the development of that lot as well.
You can just do that? You can just carve that out like that?
Well, as long as you're meeting the requirements for zoning. So, it's not creating any violation of the lot layout or anything. So, yes, you can do land swaps, as long as you're not creating any kind of additional problem as it relates to the zoning. This situation on the other side, there's another property owner here. There's a common driveway that serves these three lots. And the applicant came back at one point, the owner previously added this portion of the common, the shared driveway to this lot. But in doing so, minimized the buildable area for this parcel. So, now they want to give this liver back, so that they can potentially create a building lot over there. So, again, no frontage, it's just a little land swap, but it has to go through this process. And so, you would be voting on an endorsement that this is not a subdivision plan, that it's just, you know, a minor.
Is there a second? Jenna, a second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Uh, no.
We don't have any minutes, is that right? So, there is one more very important motion.
Happy birthday, yeah?
No. But we have no other business.
Oh.
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Motion to adjourn, that sounds good.
And Krista seconds, all those in favor? Unanimous approval.
Jesus.